Close session for one item under, um, one under, one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one eight eight consultation with legal counsel employed on or retained by public body retaining specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice. One hundred and fifty-five acre on Memorial Drive.
I move to second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Mr. Stone.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, now we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Dawson and the invocation by Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your continued grace and mercy. We ask that you would guide each of us this evening as we conduct the business of our town. And please, please grant us wisdom in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I'd like to welcome all the visitors here in person and online. Thank you for being here. I like to see this room full. This looks good. All right, do we have any modifications to public session? I don't think there are any. Okay, all right. We'll start with presentations first. These are limited to fifteen minutes. Twenty twenty-three excellence in water works operations and performance awards. Lisa Crabtree.
Council members, Mayor Collins, we are so excited to be here at the Town of Pulaski. So I've been with the Department of Drinking Water, Department of Health for five years, and I thought my poor little town of Pulaski Water Plant with its super pulsators would never get to this point. And I am so excited to be here and actually not just giving them any award, but the gold award. That means they not only made it an award, but they actually made the best water that they can possibly make out of a filter plant. That means their turbidity coming into the plant was, they, they clarified it down to that it was, when it was coming into the plant from coming through this, those poor pitiful little super pulsators. And I say poor pitiful because there's only three in the state of Virginia and there's not very many of them in the whole nation. They actually were able to clarify it so that ninety-five percent of the time it was running at less than a point zero three into you. And then the filtered turbidity going out of the plant, it ran, it never got above a one because a greater than a one is a violation. And then going out of the plant, it was always less than a point three. So ninety-five percent of the time, always less than a point three. So that is pretty awesome considering what we have to work with. And I know you guys have toured the plant and I know Mr. Day has some big plans for our water plant, which is good. So I've been, like I said, I've been, I've done environmental engineering for twenty-plus years now. Um, it's been under consent order since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, it was modified and it was under a new, put under a new consent order in two thousand and twenty-ish. And so it has made great strides under his current D O. Um, I would like to say David Payton and his crew, they have made, you know, all kinds of advances with what technology they have. And so they are doing, you guys, in the town of Pulaski, the water that they provide to the town, they provide excellent water with what they have to work with. So they are doing a great job. And it's purely because they work and they are consistent in how they run and the pay, they're very, very, very diligent in what they do is the reason that you have the water that you have. Really because of that.
David, man, this here speech.
Only because we have diligence. So we are very excited to present the Town of Pulaski, their operators, the twenty twenty-three Gold AWAP Award.
Thank you very much.
Ready for a photo? Is it just you two? Any more Water Works people?
Yeah, we've got two more operators.
Get him in the photo?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Council members? Come on, council members. Council members. We always like the council members.
We just didn't want to take credit.
No, we like the council members. We always like council members. And we are so excited.
Look at David's file. Fine big David.
Love the T in the background. One, two, three. Okay, and wait a second.
Can you get a picture of David and the operators and the health department?
Okay. Wow. Come and you go. Here we go. Look at this here.
He's gonna smile yet.
All right, one, two, there we go.
All righty, thank you so much. Uh, next we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Um, that's observa- um, observance of National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. So I will read that resolution for you. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed the First Proclamation recognizing May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week to pay tribute to the law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and to voice our appreciation for those who currently serve on the front lines of the battle against crime. And whereas in observa- observance of this week, the town council desires to recognize the law, the local law enforcement officers of the Town of Pulaski Police Department who are dedicated to preserving and secure, the security of our families, schools, and neighborhoods, and enforcing the laws of the Commonwealth and codes of the Town of Pulaski. And whereas law enforcement officers report for duty each and every day with the knowledge of the dangers they may face and sacrifices they may be called upon to make in order to sa- safeguard the public and enforce laws. And whereas we reflect upon the enduring commitment and valor of our town law enforcement officers as their commitment to maintaining law and order in our communities ensures the safety and well-being of the citizens of the Town of Pulaski. And whereas it is vital that we pay tribute to the law enforcement officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize their sacrifices as well as the hardship and loss suffered by the families of those fallen officers. And whereas Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day are opportunities to honor the officers who have fallen in the line of duty, recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those officers and the families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this seventh day of May twenty twenty-four, that the Town Council as part of National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day does hereby recognize the commitment, the law enforcement officers dedication to the community and their fellow citizens. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted the seventh day of May twenty twenty-four by the duly recorded vote of the Town Council of Pulaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right. Chief.
If that's fine with you.
You guys are gonna have to get close.
Yeah, y'all gonna have to get in tight.
Hey, Mike.
Smile, Stone.
Just look in the middle.
Okay. That could just about ever, bud. Good. Looks good, looks good. Do you want the town council to back, like, standing up or no? Do we not be the only ones? Good. You got a shot?
Chief, can you introduce your team?
All right, so we got Assistant Chief Hudson right here. Captain Saul, he's the patrol captain. Officer Stone right here, he's very well-known throughout the town.
That's right.
Officer Lucas. Captain Varmerly, who's over the accreditation and professional standards, training and all that. Lieutenant Riddle, who works in investigations. Officer Minnick. Officer Kelly. Officer Blevins. Sergeant Brutus Hill. And Captain, oh, excuse me, Lieutenant Vickersen. Uh, K nine healer of Juneau. And they all do a fabulous job, which makes my job a lot easier and Pam is very, very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all, be careful. Thank you, chief.
Y'all be careful.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
I'm glad you brought him out.
All righty. All right, next on our agenda is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Resolution observing May as Building Safety Month. Um, I don't see Tim here.
Yeah, he had some family matters.
So would you take care of this then?
You want me to read it?
I, yeah, because I don't have twenty, okay, do you want me to read it out? I got it. I got it. Okay, I'll read it. It was not here like the other one. All right. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Resolution observing May as Building Safety Month. Whereas the Town of Pulaski, Virginia is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of, uh, vel- vel- theh, vigil, I cannot talk today.
Vigilance.
Yes. Vigilance, I can't, I'm sorry. Guardians. Building safety and fire prevention officials, design professionals, contractors, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the consti- in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety or the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated professional, are dedicated professional members of the construction industry with a common goal to create, implement, and enforce the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern buildings, building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to remind the public about the critical role of our communities largely unknown protectors of safe, public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas for the month of May each year in observation of Building Safety Month, the citizens of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and prosperity, or and property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting this regular session, this seventh day of May twenty twenty-four, do hereby observe the month of May twenty twenty-four as Building Safety Month. May I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Resolution observing May as Building Safety Month as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye. All right, and then April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Town Council Budget Work Session Meeting Minutes. Do I do, can we do them together? Or should we just do one, just do one? Okay, so do that one and then we'll do the April twenty-third then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve council, Town Council Meeting Minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, moving forward, we've moved to the public comment period. I have no speaker slips, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, for your consideration tonight is April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Town Council Meeting Minutes. Do I do, can we do them together? Or should we just do one, just do one? Okay, so do that one and then we'll do the April twenty-third then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve council, Town Council Meeting Minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, now we have the council comments, so, um, Mr. East?
Um, one comment, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I wanted to raise the question, I think there was some mixed, uh, mixed opinions on it the last time this came out, but I've seen, I've had comments made to me regarding the bike park and the mowing. And, um, I just kind of feel like it personally, and, and the feedback that I've gotten is that it, it looks unkept and, uh, is not really the image we wanna, we wanna put out there. So I don't know what your opinion is on it, but, uh, so I, if, if, if there's no disagreement, I'd like to, it'd be nice if we could keep that mode uptight, especially being at the entrance of town.
I like, whatever the appropriate height is, it's the, the top knocked off, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I know there, there were some comments made that, you know, it's kind of some intentional growth there to try and help grow in and, and reduce erosion around that area and so. Sure there's a happy medium somewhere in there.
But we can, we can get Jamie in on it, he's all about it. Hey, watch that.
I don't have any.
Mr. Clark?
Nothing.
Mr. Dawson?
I was just gonna congratulate Pulaski on Main and, uh, and other folks involved with, uh, the farmer's market, with the marketplace this evening. We got a chance to swing by there beforehand and, uh, seemed to be very well attended, seemed very enjoyable. Everybody there seemed to be kind of, you know, a lot of folks coming and grabbing food and going, a lot of folks staying there and enjoying the music and eating there and looked like quite a few folks were making use of shopping, the vendors that were there and, um, just seemed very successful, you know? And so just want to congratulate those folks involved in that. It seemed to go very well and, and, uh, hopefully continue to see that grow with the positive word of mouth. That's all I have.
Mr. Ackley?
I got just a few, you know, uh, uh, tree cutting all over town. I know we're busy, it's not a, it's not a thing we're gonna do right now, but over the summer months, a lot of these trees do need to be cut back off roads, but, uh, one of the reasons I want to bring it up, Chris Phillips, that's, uh, I think works for the town down there, I know he does town. Uh, I actually received a complaint from Mr. Steele about a, a sign that was put up by the town for autistic children playing, it was put up in the wrong place. He'd been trying to get it changed for several weeks. He called me and I happened to run up on Chris, well, I just wanted, you know, reach out to Chris the next morning to take care of. And Jamie was, uh, very appreciative of it, but Chris, uh, if you would, Mr. Day, reach out to Chris Phillips, just as a whole and thank him, he, he's a great worker. Of course, all of them are, they're all great workers. Uh, Chris is, uh, he stays long and he, he does what he's gotta do, see, he's a great guy, so. Um, paving looks real good, uh, got paving coming down from the hospital, looks, it's looking really good. Uh, senior citizen, senior citizen, sometime or another, I'd like for the council to take a look or Mr. Day, take a look at, if they haven't already done it, is get a better van. I, I think the van they've got is, is probably ready for a crusher. Sweet Amy, I called her Sweet Amy, so the senior center where, you know, she's, she's an angel to those people. And, uh, our seniors really deserve, they, we got a lot comes from county, comes in now, uh, they really love her and they really love going over what the town, what the Town Council has done, the town staff, so, uh, I know, I haven't talked to her about anything about it, but I do know that van has given a lot of trouble and some of the trips had to be maybe counseled or worked around, but if we could work it in a budget to get some type of a little bit nicer van for a seniorship, I know they really appreciate it, so. Uh, other than that, uh, thank you, Mr. Manager, Levy, staff, everybody doing a great job. Our new attorney. Spencer's on the way out. Thank you.
I didn't even sit up here.
Mr. Quants?
Mr. Reese?
Uh, just one thing, um, we are, we talked about water and, um, I happened to be walking around, uh, a week or so ago and noticed that there was a leak in the street. Um, and I also have noticed today that it's already been fixed. And as I was looking, um, walking in this morning, this evening, I noticed that, you know, even a, a relatively small leak, if it's running all the time, and you could hear this water running, I mean, that can be five, ten, fifteen thousand gallons of water a day. Um, and so I would encourage anybody who sees what they see as a leak to let us know 'cause I don't think, it, it was so subtle that I don't think people would have saw it, but it's just like letting a hose run outside your house, it'll jack up your, uh, water bill. And if anybody sees things like that, please let the town know so that we know to fix it 'cause it's, I don't know how many miles of, of pipe we got, but we got a lot, more than anybody can keep an eye on, on a daily, weekly, or even monthly basis. So thank you to the, the hardworking guys at Public Works for, for taking care of that.
Um, I'd like to reiterate about Pulaski on Main and the marketplace. There was a very good turnout today. I mean, there were lots of people out there and it was nice seeing the community coming out and I hope that they continue to do that. Um, 'cause it's good for all of us to get together and just see our neighbors. Um, also I want to remind that Music and Merchants is coming up the eighteenth of this month, so I hope to see lots of faces of people here in town and tell everybody from outside of town, bring them in, let's get that money from other towns. That's what we like. Um, but with that, um, the manager's report. Mr. Day?
Okay, I just got a few things, uh, that somebody mentioned to me earlier before the meeting about the, the budget public hearing, that'll be at your next, uh, your next meeting. Uh, what is that date?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, so, uh, we'll have our public hearing then. Uh, the marketplace at the train station, obviously y'all know about that today, it'll be every Tuesday from four to seven, um, through September the twenty-fourth. Pulaski Area Transit on May eighteenth at Draper Valley Golf Course, and I know none of y'all, I think I sent that out, I know the only one that kind of responded was Mr. Ratliff and he, I think he just wanted me to know that he was gonna be at Myrtle Bay. Also, um, event info, uh, May twentieth from five thirty to seven P M at the train station. Info event, I'm not sure what that is, um.
Modular event.
Yeah.
No, it's, uh.
There's a modular event, they're gonna be doing, but they're gonna bring in a, a modular home for Building Safety Month. Um, we're gonna have someone from Clayton Homes and, and do a little presentation for that.
Also, um, just to give you a little bit of a, an update, um, I can't remember exactly how many it was, but, uh, maybe Austin or Scott, but last month, how many NO reads did we have? Like five hundred, something like that? Well, go ahead, speak on it. What was?
I wanna say it's between nine and five hundred.
Yeah, that's a gap, two hundred. So anyway, uh, it was a significant amount of NO reading. What that means, it means our meters are aging out, uh, so they were replaced, um, probably seventeen, eighteen years ago and we, we've to date replaced, um, a significant amount of them. So we're in a pro- a process of trying to get our, our meters updated to where we have some dependable meter reading, obviously we can serve the public better and some accuracy there. They're spending a tremendous amount of time on that, so you can imagine with seven hundred NO reads, we're having to go out and actually pop those leads, figure out what's going on and, uh, so it comes at a, a huge price, so, um, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Reese's comments about if you see a water leak somewhere, uh, the cost of that, and we've talked about that and we'll continue to, uh, build on that. So, um, hopefully sixty-seven, we'll be able to close on that relatively soon. I, I got a phone call today from Pulaski Lofts and that project is, is moving forward. I'm gonna write some letters today to recognize some of those commitments that can, council has made for them in years past with some of the incentives we got. Um, also have been in really close communication, I don't know how it popped up so quick, but Bimmer World, they are finally at a point where they are ready to close, so it's not been the county, it's not been the town, it's actually, and I'm saying this respectfully, that, you know, their ti- it's been their time and, uh, so I think they might have a bank that they're working with and we don't have a tie to that bank in any way, but they're wanting to have this closing process take place at one time with both localities. So that is scheduled for Thursday morning, uh, this week, so we'll finally be able to put that to rest. Other than that, um, you had mentioned, um, the senior center and, uh, I, I gave, uh, Amy approval, uh, probably two months ago when I first came here to, to look for a van. Problem is we can't find them. I put in a phone call at Sunny Merrimer also and, um, I've also talked to Pulaski Transit, is that Pulaski County Transit? Um, and they don't have anything, uh, so, um, and the paving, um, yeah, it, I didn't know they've already been, I guess they've been up there, so. Uh, had a meeting today, by the way, with, with Chris and Kim on some other projects, so, uh, it is a great team they've got out there. Um, the structures that are at the Public Works building are absolutely beyond their useful lives, so I gave them a go ahead today to replace those little overhanging sheds and stuff, so. They were very appreciative of that. They've got some capital outlay projects that we'll be bringing to y'all in the future, uh, but y'all call it the C I P plan, so we're kind of revamping that and updating it. Uh, other than that, things seem to be going along really well and we're all gaining ground. All right.
I just have two quick comments. All right. Oh, in regards to the Pulaski Lofts, um, you know, uh, Mr. Critchfield, when he completed one of the buildings downtown and, you know, got it redeveloped for, you know, and put, uh, apartments upstairs and downstairs, they did a, a fantastic event, you know, that really drew a lot of attention, you know, to what could be done with those buildings.
Sure.
Um, and I know that's not something that we would, would or could do solely on our own and maybe more of a Pulaski on Main kind of talk, but it sure would be nice, you know, when that, uh, project gets finalized, you know, for us to promote, you know, to their benefit hopefully as well.
Sure.
Uh, what they've done and, and, and allow the world to know what's possible and, and what they've done with that particular location. Um, and I, I was trying to find it, I couldn't find it, but did I see that friends of Pete Creek are doing a five K run? When, when is that?
May twenty-fifth.
So that's coming up pretty close, too.
Yeah.
Um, do we have any information as far as how people would sign up for that or is there anything on, on our web?
On our Facebook, but I can definitely send it out. Um, Nate over outdoors, um, he was sending me information recently, so I think it's Yep.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I have a reminder of our future council meeting, it was May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, closed session at five-thirty, open session at seven. I have nothing else on the agenda, so I declare this meeting adjourned.